To call the June 24th meeting of the Sacramento County Planning Commission to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Hom.
Here.
Commissioner Polley.
Here.
Commissioner Shelby.
Here.
Commissioner Tatisi.
Here.
Commissioner Martinson.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great. Can any staff want to introduce themselves?
William Burke with County Council.
Alma Woyos, Assistant Clerk of the Board.
Chris Bohulie, Planning and Environmental Review.
Great. Thanks for everybody for joining us tonight. If you would like to speak, we'd ask that you fill out the pad in the back and we'll call your name on the screen. Any folks that are wishing to speak tonight, please stand up and we'll have our clerks swear you in right now. I have -- or applicants. I have one John Zolvan signed in. Okay.
Please raise your right hand and the appropriate response is "I do." Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this commission is the truth so help you, God? If you do not swear, do you so affirm? When you go to the podium, please state your name for the record and the statement. I have been sworn. Thank you.
And so for the couple of folks that stood and did not sign in, please sign in the back so that we know which item you'd like to speak on. Thank you. We'll start with the first item.
Item number one, PLMP 2019-00059, use permit, BOB Inc., located at 3399 Arden Way in the Arden Arcade Community. Environmental doc is exempt.
Good evening, Chair and members of the commission. My name's Kimber Gutierrez and I'm an Associate Planner with the Office of Planning and Environmental Review and I will be presenting the Sacramento Bingo Use Permit Amendment request to you The request before you is a use permit amendment to eliminate an expiration term from an existing Bingo Center operation located at 3399 Arden Way in the Arden Arcade Community. The project site is approximately 1.21 acres located within an existing commercial complex. The building located on the site is owned by the Bingo Center, which is the applicant, while the land the building sits on and surrounding commercial complex is owned by a separate entity. The applicant leases the parcel containing the Bingo Center, the parking parcel to the south, and utilizes the shared parking parcel within the middle. As you can see, the building is set back quite a ways from the street, approximately 300 feet, 350 feet north of Arden Way and 400 feet west of Wyatt Watt Avenue. Surrounding land uses include commercial uses to the northeast and south and multifamily residential development to the west. So that's the shared, that's the parcel, parking parcel that they lease to the south and then the orange is the shared parking parcel that all the land, oh, all the land uses in the area use. All right. So the project site is within the limited commercial zoning district and the surrounding zoning districts include RD5, RD30, and limited commercial. So some key points, the site currently contains an existing Bingo parlor and has historically been a Bingo parlor and other indoor recreation facilities since 1984. The Sacramento Bingo Center has been operating at the site for approximately 12 years. The applicant has obtained two use permits since 2007. Each use permit contained a sunset provision. So the first one contained a three-year term and the second a 10-year term, which expires on January 12th of next year. The sunset provisions were conditioned in order to monitor the impact of the large recreation use on the adjacent residential uses and no incidents have reported, been reported to code enforcement or to the sheriff's department. So the applicant is requesting to eliminate the condition that proposes the 10-year expiration term so that they could continue their operational use. No changes, operational or physical alterations to the building are proposed. However, the project site landscaping does not meet current standards. Given that the existing site layout and dimensions, there is minimal space to make improvements without eliminating parking spaces which are utilized and shared by the other businesses within the existing complex center. Staff is not recommending the applicant come to full landscape development standards that is pretty fiscally impactful to the existing Bingo operation, given the unique lease and ownership situation and would not be visible from the public right-of-way at its setback approximately 400 feet from both streets. And it would not be physically integrated to the developed site in a way that would successfully meet our minimum landscape development standards. So other than that, the site is in compliance with all other development standards, including parking and setbacks. So the Arden Arcade CPAC met on March 28th, 2019 and recommended approval of the project. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recognize the exempt status of the request under the California Environmental Quality Act and approve the use permit amendment to eliminate condition number 13, thus removing the expiration term from the use permit, subject to the findings and conditions listed in attachment two of the staff report. And with that, I will conclude the staff report and can answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
I have one quick, one quick question. Thank you. Since the sunset is being removed or being recommended to be removed, does that mean that if the building changes ownership, that the use permit would go automatically to the new owners?
Correct, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have one thing to add. I wanted to address the landscaping situation. You see on page six of your staff report that there are four separate instances of noncompliance. In terms of landscaping, the staff report explains or offers justification as to why those regulations should not apply to this use, but there's no explanation of how that noncompliance is being excused formally in terms of a variance or a special development permit or how that's going to be handled. There is a suggestion that there is, that the use is grandfathered in and I haven't verified whether or not those landscape provisions were adopted after this use was initially approved. I've also, it's also my understanding that there may be an issue about ownership. Staff mentioned that the building apparently is owned separate from the lot around it. If that's the case, then it could be that whoever owns the parking lot is in noncompliance and not the owner of the Bingo operation. So you may want to address that when it comes time to make your approval. Or denial.
Can, can staff respond?
Sure. I think the, we also passed out to you a copy of the previous use permits site plan, which was not included in your packet. However, the previous use permit was included. And so staff maintains that the previous use permit that was approved in, I believe, 2010 conditioned the, the use to be in substantial compliance with the site plan that was included in the previous, or with that previous use permit, which corresponds to the existing conditions of the, of the parking lot. So the upshot is that the previous use, or the current use permit allowed for the current conditions that are on the site. The request that is before you is an elimination of one of those conditions, which is the, the sunset provision, but all other conditions in that, with that use permit are currently being met.
So how did the previous use permit deal with the nonconformance of the landscaping requirements or was it issued prior to those requirements were in place?
Well, the landscape conditions have changed since 2010, most, most dramatically in 2015 with the Development Code standards, but we would have to go back and look at the previous conditions in place in 2010 when that use permit was issued to see what, what standards may not have been met and whether or not they were just not addressed. In the previous use permit, there was no mention of a variance or a special development, I mean, there weren't special development permits, but a variance. So presumably either they were meeting standards or they just weren't addressed as part of that use permit that was previously issued.
And this is for council. If a permit was issued under substantial compliance for the previous use and codes have changed, is there a process to grandfather that or do you need a specific variance request for that?
No, there's no, there'd be no variance required. Then it would just be, it would be, it would qualify for grandfathering under our nonconforming use provisions of the code. What I'm hearing is basically the prior use permit excused those landscaping requirements by virtue of a, of a site plan that didn't include the kinds of buffer zones and planters that are required. That's not what was stated in the staff report. Staff report says there's four different violations. So I guess I'm hearing that there's a subtle difference here.
Sure.
I, I still, I'm not quite sure that there is a, a way for the prior use permit to excuse an adopted zoning regulation unless it specifically expressly said so. And it didn't. So I, I think that there is a violation here. I think it may easily be addressed through a variance or a special development permit. The other issue is whether or not the noncompliance is the problem of this owner or for the lot owner and maybe the applicant can better help explain that situation of ownership. I just think that the noncompliance needs to be addressed one way or another in a more formal way than just the explanation in the staff report.
Well, and it sounds like there's a question as to whether those codes were in place for the previous permit because there's been several updates.
There has been. That's correct.
We say addressed, maybe give an example of how we would address it today? Would it be, we would make it a part of our motion or is it a separate?
Today, if you found as a factual matter that this use was in place before the landscaping provisions of the code were adopted, it would just be grandfathering and I wouldn't have a problem with it. If that's not the case and we were to find that a, an entitlement is required and it would have to be continued and processed for an additional entitlement, there's also the possibility that there is a violation here, but it's not the problem of this particular owner and it could be up to county code enforcement to address the landscaping issues with the owner of the lot. And that's hopefully what the applicant can help to explain. So there are a few possible ways to handle it.
Okay. Any other question?
Yes. If, if this were not before this board, the remedy would simply be a code violation to go out and try to enforce this.
Correct. And I'm, you know, I'm giving, I do want to give Chris's explanation, you know, about the, the site plan from the prior approval, whether or not that waived those requirements. I, I don't know if it was missed or if the intent truly was to waive those landscaping requirements, but I don't think the prior staff report discussed it.
It did not.
It, I have the 2009 staff report and does not mention anything besides parking, the amount of parking requirements.
But just to clarify, those landscape requirements were in place when that permit was issued in 2009?
There would have been some landscape requirements, but not the, not the current landscape requirements that were revised in 2015.
So they weren't technically up to the 2009 code when that permit was issued and it's just not referenced in the staff report as to why?
That's correct.
Other questions of staff? Okay. We'll ask the applicant to come forward. Is that Patrick?
I'm Patrick O'Neil. I've been sworn in. So yeah, actually, as far as my knowledge, back in 2009, we were compliant with all the different updates that they've done to it. One of the big things was also not just the landscaping, but the actual parking. When we had our initial permit application, we had to have a certain number of parking spaces. That has actually been lowered since then. And if you notice the two different parcels that we have, the one further south, we really only obtained that to meet the current parking requirements at the time. So with the parking requirements now, we actually don't need that lot. So we could just get rid of it, which would take us down to enough parking spaces, which right in the code, it says that if any of these changes would make it so that we have not enough to fulfill the requirement, then we would not have to make those landscaping upgrades. And so that's one big thing that I feel, we definitely, I talked with Chris about a couple of weeks ago, I believe. And yeah, that is kind of another piece of this pie is not just the landscaping, the way that those are changed, it's the parking actual requirements as well. As far as the relationship with us owning just the building and not the land, that is true. It's a different company that owns the land. It's a very weird situation and I am 100% positive that whatever you try to enforce on them, they will just pass right on down to us. So it's unfortunate, but that's just the way that that relationship is.
So, I'm sorry, staff, this is for staff. So what's the scope of the landscaping that would need to be done if the request was to bring it up to current standard? I'm, by the way, I'm not recommending. I'm trying to understand the scope.
So just, just briefly using the, using the site plan here, there would likely need to be landscaping along the, along the western side of the property, creating some, some buffer between the use and the residential uses to the, to the west of the property. There are probably a number of, of landscape planters that would need to be installed throughout the parking lot, both their current parking lot for this parcel that's highlighted as well as to the parcel to the south. They also have a reciprocal parking agreement, I believe, with the sort of linear property that's just to the east of the site, which would also need to have landscape planters included throughout it. So to bring it up to our current 2015 Development Code standards, there would be quite a bit of landscape improvements that would need to be met.
Two other quick, quick, one's an observation and one's a question. It sounds like if we were to request that, then that extra lot, that you might have to keep that extra lot in order to have enough parking spaces, which then runs into landscaping in that lot, if, if I understand correctly. And then the other, this is just an observation, to the east, there's a relatively large parking lot that doesn't appear to have a huge amount of landscaping with it. So it seems to me that in this general neighborhood, there isn't commonality of a tremendous amount of landscaping and it's probably somewhat appropriate to the uses to not have as much landscaping. So that's an observation and a little bit of a question, if, if that's accurate.
We did not, we did not look into the, exactly the number of parking spaces that would be, would be required and would be able to be provided if they brought all of the landscape improvements, or if they made all those landscape improvements. So I'm not exactly sure whether they would still need that parcel to the south or whether they would need to continue to lease that property to the south. I know that the applicant has maintained that they may not need that, but we have not done that review at this point.
So would we need then to either agree on a variance or agree on landscaping to be done in order to pass, to approve this tonight?
Can I continue?
Especially since there is a separate property owner, right?
Well, okay, you're kind of blending, I think, a couple of different possible ways out of this. The, the comments you made about how overall this area doesn't have that much landscaping, it might not be appropriate, all of that would be relevant to a justification for either variance or a special development permit, which we can't approve, right? It's not agendized, we can't just add it to the project right now. It's got to be re-noticed and it's got to be addressed in the staff report, et cetera, et cetera.
Got it.
I thought maybe I heard from staff that the landscape requirements did change somewhat in substance from what they were in 2007, when this use was first approved.
I think 2009 is what they said.
2009? No, I'm asking when the use, the use permit was first approved for the, for the Bingo use?
Oh yeah, '07, yes.
'07? If that's correct and then this is grandfathered in, then you can go ahead and act on it. The only lingering question I would have is if they are in compliance with the existing use permit, which it does have a site plan, but it also has the catch-all condition that says, you know, thou shalt comply with all other county regulations and zoning provisions and standards. So I don't know what the answer to that is, but if the substantive landscaping standards have changed, since the use first was approved, then we can treat this as a grandfathering, nonconforming situation. That's how I interpreted the staff report without it actually coming right out and saying it, but that's what I thought it was getting at. You can go forward that way.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you. Can, just for the record, can staff sort of clarify that? Obviously, it sounds like there have been substantive changes. Is that the intent of the staff report, even though it wasn't entirely clear?
I think that is staff's understanding. However, I think in, in light of the discussion, I think it would be prudent for staff to review the standards that were in effect in 2007 when the use permit was originally approved and then make a determination about whether or not it met standards in 2007 and is being grandfathered at this point, or whether or not a special development permit would be required to be tagged on to the use permit amendment that's before you this evening.
So your recommendation would be that we ask staff to go back and do that work and bring this forward later?
Correct. We continue it to the July 22nd meeting, given that your July 8th meeting is, is being canceled.
Any other discussion?
I'd probably make a recommendation to continue it because my concern on this is a little bit more holistic. I understand being consistent, but also we have the heat island effect on the shading requirements for the environment as a whole. So I'm sort of curious of what the, what was approved in 2007 for, not so much for landscape requirements for buffers between our neighbors, or for the shading, the 50% shading requirement. I'm, I would be okay to give on, you know, any landscape buffers since none, it really exists between all the other neighbors, but I think the 50% shading, or whatever percent shading was applicable back in 2007 may be appropriate.
Should I take that as a motion?
My motion is to continue it and let staff report back to us.
Second.
All right. Please vote.
Unanimous vote to continue the item to the July 22nd meeting? Thank you. Item number two, PLMP 2019-00058, Use Permit Amendment Development Plan Review, PepsiCo of Sacramento, applicant Sunworks United, Inc., located at 7550 Reese Road in the South Sacramento Industrial Neighborhood Preservation Area in the South Sacramento Community. Environmental document is exempt.
I'm David Olery with the Plant, the Office of Planning and Environmental Review and tonight we have before you a development plan review and a use permit for a new solar energy facility located at 8550 Reese Road in the South Sacramento Community Plan. The proposed facility will be used to power an existing Pepsi bottling facility on the site. The subject property is also located in the South Sacramento Industrial Neighborhood Preservation Area, which does require the development plan review, as well as prescribe specific development standards to preserve and protect adjacent residential uses. So up on the slide here, we have a site plan. It is important to note that the 75-foot setback requirement from residential is maintained by the project. And here we have the elevations and photo imagery of what the site will look like. So the use permit amendment is required in order to add the panels to the site plan of the prior approved use permit for the Pepsi bottling facility. Staff has reviewed the project for conformance with applicable development standards and has found no conflicts. Regarding screening, the panels will be behind an existing block wall, which varies in height between eight and a half and 10 feet. The proposed solar panels are six and a half feet. The panels will, will approximately power 30% of the energy demands of the, the bottling facility. And the project is consistent with the general plan and South Sacramento Community Plan in that it is developing renewable energy sources. The project does qualify for exemption from CEQA under Section 15329. Here are some photos of the existing site. The South Sacramento Community, or Community Planning Advisory Council did meet on April 17th, 2019 and recommended approval with no issues being raised. And with that, staff does recommend approval, recognizing the exempt status of the request under Section 15329 of the California Environmental Quality Act and approve the use permit amendment subject to findings and conditions listed in attachment two, as well as approve the development plan and find it consistent with the South Sacramento Industrial NPA, subject to the findings and conditions listed in attachment two as well. And so I am here to answer any questions and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
I do have a question. Do large arrays of, of solar panels like this cause heat islands similar to what Commissioner Hom was describing, where there's no shade and there's no landscaping and it's certainly a draw for as much heat as possible?
You know, I don't believe so, but I'll let the applicant answer that question.
Any other questions of staff before we bring the applicant up? Okay.
No, they don't put off a lot of heat.
Can you state your name for the record?
Yes, hi. Sorry, Sarah Harmony.
And you're agreeing to all the conditions in the staff report?
Yes.
Other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Entertained discussion or motion? Entertained discussion or motion?
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Item number three, PLMP 2017-00342, Use Permit, Special Development Permit and Design Review. Final approval is by the Board of Supervisors. Applicant is Bupender and Manpreet Santu, located at 7225 Marietta Drive, approximately 1,000 feet east of the intersection of Marietta Parkway and Jackson Road in the Rancho Marietta Plan Development, 77 PD 10, within the Kasunus community. Environmental Doc is an addendum to prior final supplemental environmental impact report.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Meredith Holesworth, and I'm the project manager for the Marietta Gardens Circle K. This site is located just east of the Marietta Drive and Jackson Highway intersection. It's within the Marietta Gardens, sorry, the Rancho Marietta Plan Development and the Kasunus community, and the site is zoned LC. The request before you this evening is a use permit to allow an auto service station within the LC zone, extended convenience store hours of one extra hour from 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM, for the roof canopy structure on the gas station canopy to exceed the two and a half foot standard to reach four feet nine and a half inches, and a drive-through window within 300 feet of residential zoning. The request includes a special development permit to allow a reduction in the landscaping along the highway, reduction in landscaping between the drive-through lane and the public right-of-way, to allow for an increase in the allowed square footage for the service station signage, and to allow for an increase of the number of monument signs on site from two, sorry, from one to allow two. The request also includes a design review to comply with the countywide design guidelines. Here you can see the site plan, which shows the parallel drive-through lanes for the car wash and the subway restaurant, the shared building for the restaurant and the convenience store, and the 12 proposed fueling stations. This is the proposed landscape plan. The special development permit request includes two deviations from landscape requirements, both on the frontage along Jackson Road. Those two requests are for deviations to the freeway screening and the landscaping between the drive-through lane and the right-of-way. So these are actually both in reference to the same planter along that Jackson frontage. There is a landscape and irrigation easement about 20 feet wide that you can see in the gray hatched area that will be maintained by the Development Association. So there is an additional buffer there. It's just not considered to be part of the site. Here are the proposed building elevations. Another of the special development permit requests is to increase the gas station signage over what is allowed, and that signage includes all Circle K and Shell signage. So as you can see on these elevations, they do have signage on the front and rear elevations because that rear elevation does, is visible from Jackson Roads. That's the reason for that request. These are the signs that are proposed on site. One is the pricing sign for this, the Shell station. The other is to serve the surrounding center. The special development permit also does include that request to allow both of these signs to be on that same parcel. This project will ultimately be heard by the board as the final hearing body. As I mentioned, it proposes a drive-through restaurant that shares that same building with the convenience store, and the restaurant will have amplified noise. Within 300 feet of residential zone, it's currently not developed and is across Jackson Road. An environmental coordinator addendum was prepared stating the previous environmental document was adequate and appropriate, and that document was actually a supplemental EIR, not an EGDEC. And as a part of that addendum, there was analysis done on the noise from the drive-through window and the car wash, and the levels were found to be well below general plan levels. The DRAC initially reviewed the project in August of last year, and they had a few revisions that they requested, so the applicant was able to satisfy those, and then they reviewed it again the following month. The DRAC at that meeting founded that it should be found in compliance. The Kasunus CPAC reviewed the project and voted unanimously to recommend approval with members present, and staff is also recommending approval of the project. The actions that staff is recommending you make to the board are to recognize the environmental coordinator addendum, stating that the prior supplemental EIR is still adequate and appropriate, to approve the use permit and special development permit, and find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines, all those subject to findings and conditions and attachment to. And that does conclude staff's presentation. I'm happy to answer questions, and we do have the applicant team here as well.
Thank you. Questions of staff?
I just have a question for, good evening, Meredith. Could you actually clarify the two monument signs? Because looking on the site plan, I only see one monument sign, and there are going to be two on this site?
Absolutely. So, let's see, my mouse does not show it to you, does it? Sure. John Sullivan, just show us.
Very top right, where you come off the highway. It's in that little quarter in the corner. That's the larger sign.
Okay, where's the smaller?
Oh, I found a laser pointer here. This is the, this is the larger one.
Okay, got it.
The smaller sign is down here and it's the gas.
Right here.
Oh, okay, got it, got it, got it. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Great, thanks. We'll bring the applicant up. Sorry.
I'm John Sullivan, and I'm the developer of the Marietta Gardens. Frank, the architect for the applicant, is on jury duty today, so I thought I'd come and answer any questions you might have had.
You're in agreement with all the conditions in the staff report?
We are. And just a clarification, the landscaping along the highway is in, it was, it was hydrocedic last winter and it grew up nicely, and it's available to be temporarily irrigated while we find out how it comes back next winter. But it's another roughly 20 feet between the, there's a wall between the edge of the buildable property and the highway. It's about 10 feet tall. So it's, the drive-through kind of goes in an alcove along that block wall.
Other questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just this quick question of staff, can you, it was outlined in the staff report, but just for all of our recollection, remind us of the process of how the commercial process is moving forward while the overall process is still, for Marietta Gardens is still working its way through?
Sure. Joelle Lindman with Planning and Environmental Review. Currently, the, I think the biggest movement currently on the site, and John actually can speak to this better probably, but the biggest movement currently is with the residential side of it. That is moving forward currently, and we have building permits in for models. If not, have they been issued at this point? I think they may have been.
31.
They have been issued?
Okay. So, and then the, obviously, the hotel is currently operating, and John can probably give an update as far as what's going on with the supermarket. We also have an application in for two other commercial projects, and they both have drive-throughs, and we're currently working on whether they will have to go through a similar process because they're within 300 feet of residential currently. So that's currently where residential and commercial is, unless you have something else to add?
Oh, Paul Frank's building?
That's the, the two drive-throughs.
Can we get him on the record?
Yeah.
Let's see, next to, next to the Shell is, which is parcel 11, is parcel 10, and that's an office building that's gone through design review. To the west of that is a small pad for Taco Bell, and that's in escrow to be sold to the developer of that. And then the two that Joelle mentioned are four and five. They're, they come off the first driveway, and one is the El Dorado Savings Bank building, and the other one is Starbucks and an AT&amp;T store. And there's a driveway in between that goes all the way back to the Bel Air store, which is, they were in today to pull the building permits for, and we're expecting to go vertical here this month, or, well, probably next month now, depending on how long it takes them to pull the permits, so.
So I think that means that there's commercial development along Jackson Highway all the way up to Marietta Drive, or is that what you guys are calling it now?
Everything from the edge of the existing Chevron station all the way to the driveway that's 1,000 feet east of Marietta Drive and, and the highway. And then back in the inline stores, we have the Bel Air, and then a building which we call Shops A to the right, which is the east. And then we have a, two pads to the west that are being consolidated with another boundary line adjustment, and we have another user that we can't announce yet on the west side that's taking 18,000 feet of the rest of that center. So it's all good.
Great. Thanks for the update. Appreciate it. Any other thoughts, discussions, entertain a motion?
I'll move staff approval.
Please vote. I almost pushed it. All right, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Great, thank you. Let's see, next item.
Item number four is a planning director's report.
I do not have a report today.
But you, I guess the scheduling matters, the July 8th meeting?
July 8th meeting is canceled, yeah.
Okay.
I got the email.
Perfect.
I do not see any other public comment, so meeting is adjourned.